Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. First on the agenda, we've got PL forty-eight dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the mayor to sign and submit an application to the Catarroges County Department of Public Works for funding associated with the city of Oleen ADA canoe and kayak launch at six zero eight R South Union Street project. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. This was actually voted on back approved November twelfth of two thousand and nineteen. And at that time, the boat launch kayak was planned for the East River Road. So what we had to do is go back and let the county know that we were moving the site to the boat launch that we have there now in South Union Street. And so this is just an update. The county approved that, said they're fiber that, and the money is still there for the project.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions on this?
I'm overwhelmingly in favor of this. This is a great idea, putting it there. I thought it was a mistake where we were going to be putting it in, and I'm glad that we are reversing our, you know, path and putting it where it's going.
Yep, absolutely. So this is going in at the, where the firemen do their training?
Yes.
At that location? Okay, very good. Any other questions? Alderman Robinson?
I was just gonna concur with Alderman Gonzalez. I love that idea, and I can't wait for it to be there. I've used that area myself all the time kayaking, and that is one of the hardest spots to get out, you know, when you got belly, you know, kind of hard, so ramp would be nice.
Okay.
I just also wanna add that I think that investment in that area, in that boat launch, that little plot over there, there's some old houses in that area, there's a big parking lot there, some old business that's ripe for development, right? If there was ever a future project, the future councils might consider where that would be developed into a, you know, picnic area, parking area slash boat launch. I think that has a lot of future potential, so just something to consider. I don't know.
Okay. Alderman Witt?
Yeah, I agree with Paul. I drove around looking when I was putting together all the activities that we have in our parks. And if you drive down to the Alameda Boat Launch, that's exactly what they have. They have a park area where you can park your car and have those picnic tables. I think that'd be a great place to have that kind of activity for the city.
All right. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Alderman Gonzalez, and seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Next, we've got PL forty-nine dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio. Council, act as lead agency, determines that the rehabilitate taxiway A and B project at the Catarroges County Oleen Airport is a type-two action, is not subject to review, consistent with SECA regulations, and that no further review or action on behalf of the city of Oleen is required. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. This is, this goes along with our, the other resolutions that have come forward here from that about bonding. We need the SECA action for bonding, or the bonding action that may be taken place.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Motion's made by Alderman Witt. Seconded by Alderman Panis. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Okay. Next, we have PL fifty dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the city auditor to bond for the airport runway and taxiway rehabilitation project. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'll let, Lenz, are you prepared to talk about this?
Yes, um, this is just to finance the work we're gonna do at the airport. There's a bond, we need to find, ban for two million dollars. Um, this is gonna be FA, according to the last time I was here, they said that this is gonna be FA funded project, so we're gonna bond the money, then once we get the money, we'll pay the bond before the year from now, then we'll have to fund whatever amount.
Okay, very good. Uh, any comments or questions? Alderman Witt?
Thank you, Alderman. Lenz, could you just, I had a couple of my constituents, I explained to them the difference between a bond and a ban. Could you just walk us through, because I also know we have a couple of people on the council, what the difference is?
So the ban is basically a bond, a bond anticipation note, it's not really a bond. After a year from the ban, it doesn't become a bond, once we finance the whole thing to a bond.
Thanks. I would explain it to her, but I just wanted, you know, you maybe walk us through it, so thank you. That's simple.
Thank you, Lenz. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Sponsor is alderman, alderwoman. McCall, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Witt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that too is moved and is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. Next, we have PL fifty-one dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the city auditor to bond for Oak Hill Park capital improvement project. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. As, as everyone's aware, that project's been approved and contracts have been signed with the contractor. And this will give us the opportunity to have the money upfront, as you know, part of it is three hundred and fifty thousand will come from, I'm like state development, and it's gonna be probably some time before we'll get that reimbursed. So this will give us the opportunity to, and I know, I believe three hundred and five thousand of it is our money or the city money, so this will give us the opportunity to bond for the entire project, and then as the, as the funds come in, before, or ban for the project, before the ban comes due, hopefully we'll have all the reimbursement and reimbursements, and we will not have to bond for that amount, pay off the ban.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yeah. Alderman Anastasia?
I, I'm in favor of Oak Hill Park. I said that from the beginning, the dog park, et cetera. But I cannot support this ban because, as I was reading through the ban, there's funding in there, two hundred and seven thousand dollars for the restroom. I believe that's an excessive, excessive amount for a restroom. And I understand that the community theater, when they have programs, they have that room there that they can use across the street. And if there's a big event that the city uses, we can always rent a water body. I cannot support two hundred and seven K. So what I would like to do, in order to get my support, is to amend Resolution fifty, even though it's PL fifty-one, I think the resolution number is fifty. Amend Resolution fifty dash twenty-two to remove the two hundred and seven K, and you will have the full support for the project down at Oak Hill Park, otherwise I cannot support the funding for that restroom. And furthermore, I'd just like to add, I mean, we could use that two hundred and seven thousand dollars, and I know it's a sore subject, but for the pool at Phil's other beds, it was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars actually that we needed to make that atop the air facility, water, game park, pools, like that's and everything. So I would say we got better use for that money than that to a restroom. So anyways, I'm making a motion, if anybody wants to second it, I don't know, to remove the two hundred and seven K.
A motion has been made.
I'll second.
Uh, so a second has been made. We technically have the ability to discuss it now, all right? We don't have to actually take a vote until we discuss it, because there are still questions, such as?
John, just, I just wanna point out, just procedurally?
Procedurally?
In order to, we can't amend the resolution, we will have to go back to John Alessi and obtain a new one.
Correct.
Just so that you're aware.
That's, that was what my question was gonna be to Lenz, is this, this resolution looks pretty official, like it came from municipal solutions, right? So they, they have pulled this together, correct?
Yes, they did.
Um, and so we can't just amend it per se on the fly, correct?
No.
No.
We'll have to go ahead and vote, and if it's failed, we can go back and go and vote.
Okay, okay. Mayor, you have any comments on, on that?
You're exactly right, yeah.
Um, so I, I guess, I hear what you're saying, Alderman Anastasia?
The, uh, if I may, guys, the contracts have already been let out to Benson Construction in the amount, and there, so I think that's gonna cause an issue, possibly could cause an issue with Benson also. I would breach a, I don't, I don't wanna use the word breach a contract, but I think there's something in there that they would, you know, have legal action, or could, I use the word could, have legal action against us now, because we have signed the contract with them.
Alderman Witt?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think before, before, we have sent the things back to municipal solutions before the change, that's not a big deal. And I think with the contract, I think if we want to bring the cost down, say, remember, this original cost, we added to it, the cost, and there are these three of us that didn't agree with it. And I think as far as our contractor, contracts have changed before, and I think that's perfectly doable, we just wanna decrease the amount of money we're spending. I've heard from several people in my ward, they just can't believe we're spending this amount of money in one park. And I agree with Mr. Anastasia, I think it started out at one cost and it grew, so that's why I can't support it. But I would support it if we could amend that.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Witt. Alderman Gonzalez?
Yep, so a few weeks ago, we debated and voted on a resolution that basically decided the contents and scope of the project, right? And the vote was four to three, and we elected to keep it the way it was, and include the full scope of bathrooms and whatever. That issue is now behind us, right? So this is paying for it. As the mayor said, contracts are released. I'd also like to just back up and say, if you remember, if anyone was paying attention, we, we can't just à la carte pick items from that bid, right? So if we wanted to go back and take the bathroom out, blow this whole thing up, go back to it, the vendor, the contractor could very well say, well, I can't do it now, I definitely can't do it for that price. And yeah, you might save twenty-five grand or fifty grand, but it's not gonna be just like, okay, scratch two hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever it was, two hundred and twenty K from the bill. So, I mean, you know, with all due respect, Alderman Anastasia, you say you care about this project, you say you care about Oak Hill Park, and you like a lot of things in it, but you're completely willing to hijack it and crash it to the ground. That's what you're, that's exactly what a motion like that is doing at this point in the game. Fact is, we voted on it, we debated it, you lost, the project is going forward in this way, and you're just trying to, last minute, destroy the project.
If I may, sorry, I'm Alderman Robinson.
Alderman Anastasia?
Uh, this was first brought up about restrooms back in two thousand and twenty, when I first got elected up here, and at that time, I said I was against putting restrooms in that park. For some reason, somehow, it did not come before the common council, I don't know what committee it went to, but it was decided that bathrooms were gonna be put in the park. And I told you that in two thousand and twenty, I was against it. Two weeks ago, or a month ago, whenever we discussed it, yes, the vote was four to three, I was against the park, the restrooms in it, and I'm not against the upgrades of the park. But now, when it comes time for the money, you need two-thirds of majority support from this common council to spend the money. So if you, if we get those same three no votes, which I think is a waste of money on that park, you don't have the funding. It's gotta get amended. So I'm just trying to save the taxpayers some money, and we don't need a Taj Mahal bathroom at Oak Hill Park.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
It's absolutely not gonna be a Taj Mahal bathroom, that's a gross mischaracterization, and, you know, that's fine, and you can say that, well, we're gonna, you know, we'll destroy the project, but when this park, which is funded by our DRI grant, and when this entire project goes in the ditch now because of that, it's gonna be on you three. It's not gonna be on the majority of the council, who, who voted and debated the proper way. This is a petty and insignificant way of killing a project, and you just don't like that spike.
Yeah, no, you can't, I'm, no, I, I get your comment. Thank you. So Alderman Gonzalez is correct, we don't have the ability at this point in the time to, to pick and choose what items we want to fund. This entire project, as an entire scope, went up to bid, and as a part of that process, when we get a bid back, and we received a bid back, and we discussed that, and we felt that when this original scope was put together with a price tag of around five hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus a little bit, uh, three years ago, okay, we've, we've sustained serious cost increases over that timeframe, all right? And so now we're looking at six fifty, right, north of that. That's, that's what we're faced with. And so I do want to reference, when we talk about, I know this was before, well, no, this was right around the time Dave had joined the council, and as well as alderwoman McCall. So I wanna just reference two hundred and fifty responses, and, and you can question the, the survey I did or not, just because you didn't see it. I've got the data, I'm happy to share with you. Out of two hundred and fifty responses, all right, and I asked for names and addresses in those responses of Oleen residents. Now, keep in mind, that's at Oleen Park, that the entire city funds and pays for. Out of that, forty-one percent, they, they ranked what they wanted out of the different list of items they wanted to see, our residents wanted to see in that park. And the first and foremost, forty-one percent ranked the modern, modern off-leash dog park as number one. Number two was permanent restrooms. Twenty-five percent of the respondents listed that as the second highest item they wanted to see in that park, followed by an outdoor permanent stage. That's what the scope of this project provides, and to vote against that is voting against the, the residents of Oleen. And, you know, after we voted, the majority vote, on what the scope of this project would be, four to three, I received close to probably seventy phone calls in favor of the Oak Hill Park project. I talked to most of my residents of my ward, and they overwhelmingly supported the entire scope of this project. And now it just comes time to pay for it. And we can argue semantics about how we're going to pay for it, we could go back to municipal solutions, and, and mayor, tell me if I'm, I'm wrong on this, or maybe, maybe Lenz would be a better source. Okay, so why don't we ban for three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of it, and we pull three hundred thousand dollars out of, because we were gonna commit three hundred thousand dollars, we pull three hundred thousand dollars out of our, our fund balance, which we were going to do to pay for this project anyways, and we call that three hundred thousand dollars the bathrooms? So then when we come back to ban on three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, well, that's not the bathroom. That one is, it's for everything else. I mean, we can argue semantics, okay, but at the end of the doc, at the end of the day, the majority will of the council has, has voted in favor of this project, and now we've gotta pay for it, okay? And to do anything else is just completely childish. Alderwoman McCall?
So I was one that voted against it, but I also understand that this is to actually pay for something that the council had already approved. So in terms of that, I think everybody knows that I do believe seven hundred and seventy dollars for shrubbery per piece is too much, and some other things I think are, are overpriced in there. However, I do understand, though, that this is actually to pay for something we've already voted four to three to go forward with. So having said that, I will tell you that I do support it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just to reiterate, and for anybody who's not familiar, you know, I've, I've been involved with these bid processes and things, and I know sometimes the numbers on the line look out of place for what you're getting, but when it comes down to a company bidding, they are looking that the bottom number is what they need to have to build what they're, what you're asking to. The, the mix becomes a puzzle piece, that they want it to look good for you, but really it's, when you get down to the bottom line, it's will build you this whole thing for that price. So when, when you get mixed into the pieces and what it costs, and whether you can change that or not, that's, it's different than just those numbers on the line.
That's set by the night, that's, that's exactly correct. Anyone else? Alderman Robinson?
I guess I'll end this with, I'm, I'm for the park, I've always been for the park. I've been preaching about dog parks and modernizing the city of Oleen, and to bring some things to the city that we are just lacking, or we are just far behind in advancing, and we seem to be stuck on this, on the, on the apex of a hill, and we just don't wanna go to the other side and, and grow. We just wanna sit back and, and stay in this little box, and it's, it's frustrating. It's, it's hard to swallow that pill. I think this park is gonna be the first of many changes in the city if we move forward. I think, just like you guys, 'cause I wasn't part of the committee then, you preached about the circles and how the, the downtown area has grown and changed over the years, how the, the, you know, last year, we were talking about the plows crashing and Armageddon down on Front Street, and how many crashes have we had down there? The roads are fine, the ambiance at night is beautiful, that, everything is just growing nicely in the city of Oleen. So the price that we were quoted in the beginning, yes, it inflated, it went up, you know, that's the price of business. I think we need to move forward and go ahead and approve this, so that contractors can go ahead and get started on Oak Hill Park for all of us to enjoy next year or the year after, whenever it's done. Thanks.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion that's been made and seconded? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay?
Nay.
All right, motion is killed. Uh, any further discussion on PL fifty-one dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio to authorize the city auditor to bond for Oak Hill Park capital improvement project? Seeing no further discussion, I'll make a motion, could I get a second?
Sorry.
Seconded by Alderman Panis, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Uh, it is referred to tonight's regular meeting for resolution. I'll make a motion to adjourn, could I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned, and I'll go ahead and call the regular meeting for the common council for Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Will the clerk please call the attendant's room?
Alderman Witt?
Yeah.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Alderwoman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
And Alderman Crawford?
Here. Uh, okay. Please rise for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I would like to salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, in the physical, liberty, and justice of our world.
Recorrecting and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleen Common Council will start on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six ten PM. Present were Alderman Crawford, Witt, Panis, Gonzalez, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. None rev?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting, could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Robinson, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports and unfinished council business.
Got it.
Communications from the mayor?
Uh, just one, we got another check from the bird, scooters, a hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, so it started, and we're, I see a lot of activity out there, so we're looking for a good sign.
It's great. Get some good weather, though.
Yes.
Um, miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
Monthly report of the city auditor, month ended April two thousand and twenty-two.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL number forty-eight dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by council president. PL number forty-nine dash twenty-two, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by council president. PL fifty dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by council president. PL number fifty-one dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by council president. PL fifty-two dash twenty-two by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting, Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, for resolution, by council president.
Okay, very good. Before I open it up for a poll of comment, at this time, I will allow, I will open it up to the aldermen to make a statement. Alderman Witt?
Yeah, I just wanna thank Lauren Kaya at the Third Graders at Eastview for putting up Eastview in Spring Street. I think it's great that our kids are out there volunteering and doing things for the community, and I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Robinson?
Thanks. I just wanted to ask the mayor if he can give us an update or any information as to the issues that I brought forward during the Public Safety Committee on North Nineteenth and North Twentieth Street, intersecting Washington Street with the sewers down that way.
Yes, I, I, not having a public works director, I would like to ask the council if they would have, be okay with looking into possibly having an engineering firm take a look at that and see what we could get done.
I, I don't have a problem with that. Alderman Robinson?
Absolutely, I think, you know, constituents are waiting to hear something move forward, so I think this is something that we can do and get it going, they've suffered long enough down there, so.
Okay, I'll get, uh...
It's dried up a bit, hasn't it?
Say again?
It's dried up a bit over there, hasn't it?
It's dried up until we get another, uh, year ready, which is next, what, Saturday?
Which is every other day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get the process started and keep the council informed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, I do have something, I've got, and I, I saw Alderman McCall's email earlier today, and I, great minds think alike, I had, I had done a little research, and I just wanted to report to the, to the city council and to the community, I had asked for usage of our, our swimming pool in two thousand and nineteen, pre-pandemic, and over the course of, from, you know, Memorial Day to the end of summer, Labor Day, it averages about fourteen people per day to the swimming pool. So there was about fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred users, divided by that, really, but it's roughly about a hundred days of summer, it's about fourteen, fifteen people on average per day across that timeframe. So I just wanted to put that statistic out. Okay? Anyone else?
I just had one quick question.
Yeah, Alderman Anastasia?
Uh, since, um, ask either you or the mayor, since our city attorney's not here, when it comes time for these bond resolution votes, or several of them tonight, and it says to get these approved, you need super majority, so is that five or six votes every week today?
Aye.
Five. I was gonna clarify that, thank, thanks for asking that, Dave. Uh, yeah, so anytime, any, you do any sort of bonding or banning, you need a super majority, which with seven, it's voted five to two. Okay.
It's a very secure law, I didn't know that, interesting.
Yes, Alderwoman McCall?
So going on, on your figures, so thank you for, for going ahead and getting that. You know, one of the things that we said is, as a city, we want our money to be put to, to good use, and we wanna be fiscally responsible, so even if we said, you know, fifteen hundred people used it during that timeframe, and we charged four dollars per person, which is more than I think we were charging, that's only six thousand dollars, and we're talking about sixty thousand annually to pretty much run it.
It was point seven hundred dollars. It was twenty-seven hundred dollars in revenue. Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-se, twenty-seven, okay.
A dollar fifty a child and I think two dollars an adult, or something like that.
So, I mean, that puts us at like a fifty-seven thousand dollar deficit for, you know, fourteen people a day. And look, my kids went there. I took my grandkids there. I made my kids learn how to swim there. I get it. I love the pool. I would love to, to see it, see us keep it. But I think that that's a lot of my nostalgia. That's not my thinking as an alderman and being fiscally responsible. So I think we need to take a look. And I hear, I've read every letter and everything that's come across. I've read the stuff on Facebook, you know, everything that everybody has brought across. And listen, I feel your pain with not having it. But the numbers by itself really speak to that. Plus, we're not even sure if we fire it up, if it'll even work, right? So we're banking on something almost in a bad faith kind of way. And I want to be the most fiscally responsible I can for our city while growing it. Those sometimes are painful things, right? And so we might not have something that we have loved long term. So I would encourage the city to really think about in our residents when, really what you're asking for, right? Is it to retain the memories you have with your children and grandchildren that are probably gone and moved out of Olean? Or is it truly because you think that this is something that is going to continue to grow Olean and it's going to earn us enough money to at least break even? Which doesn't seem, I mean, we would have to have, what, twenty times as many people going into it?
I think, I think that's, that's well, very well put. That's, I think nostalgia is a word that definitely comes to mind. And I think there's a bit of disconnect, too, between the expectations or at least the familiarity with what adolescents do today versus what they did forty or fifty years ago. And, and you know, there, there are a lot more small pools in people's backyards today. Again, we're not the first community to take this direction. It is, it is the fiscally responsible thing to do. And it's also just how times change. So anyways, Alderman Witt?
Yep, and I couldn't agree more with what both of you said. The other thing that I talked to two individuals, and they both were trying to convince me to keep it. And I told them, there are so many things that are unknown to us, even cost-wise. You brought up the equipment. It's over forty-five years old. The pool itself, you know, we just replaced or repaired this splash, the waiting pool for the little ones, and it already looks like, you know, it needs more work. And I think the other thing that I pointed out to these folks is we can't get enough people to hire enough lifeguards. You know, we have enough right now for franchise. I don't know how many we hired. So I just think, and, and trust me, I know what progress is all about. I was the person that was the head of that, those roundabouts, and I got beat up for that. So I'm a big girl. I can handle getting beat up. But I just think there is, there's just a lot of sentimental value to it. And I think people, I believe they want us to be fiscally responsible. And that's the way I vote. So, but I do, I totally agree with what we're doing with the pool. And I just think, I hope people can see that, that we are open enough for them.
Thank you, Alderman Witt. All right. Seeing nothing else, will the clerk please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right. At this time, I will invite anyone from the public to approach the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes. Anyone?
Good evening. This evening I'll be speaking for Julio Fuentes. Do you mind if he here this evening? Dear Common Council and Mayor Alio, as the president of the Olean Youth Huskies football and chair and an Olean school board member, I am saddened I could not attend this meeting to address these issues myself. It has come to my attention that our nonprofit youth organization pay over a thousand dollars a year to use the city-owned facility in Bradner Stadium. A taxpayer, as a taxpayer, I believe our tax dollars go towards the maintenance of the upkeep of this facility. A facility that sits unused and empty for most of the, most of the year. I can think of nothing more egregious than cha-charging the taxpayers of Olean than charging the youth organizations again for maintenance. It's simply not right. Our youth program is currently using foreigners as a practice field. I'm not a negative person, but to say the conditions are terrible would be an understatement. There is no working scoreboard or goalpost, which are both fines by our league. There is a fence in the middle of the field. The field is usually covered in water. There is no speaker system and the shed provided by the city is run down and used for both storage and concession. The parking lot is riddled with potholes. And to make matters worse, our youth athletes shared this field with adult leagues that allow smoking and alcohol. This is not the atmosphere I nor you should want for our youth. I unfortunately had the opportunity to play, I fortunately had the opportunity to play multiple youth sports growing up as an East Olean Bulldog. That field and the youth football changed my life, and I am sure many others. But twenty-seven years have gone by and nothing has changed. There have been no updates to the field or to the shed, and it shows. I am here to shed light on this issue as I believe we should do everything in our power to provide for our youth. They are our future. I leave you with this. As a human being, we create the world around us. I challenge you, the city of Olean, to do better as I know we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. So that's, that's something that Mr., Mr. Mayor, maybe we could reach out to Julio and give any comments? So since I'd be with him?
I'd be Lord happy to be with him, but I guess I'm not understanding this because last year, Midget League football program played in the stadium and they had all the facilities there to use. And that was at no fee from the city except for, we charge everyone for the labor costs, costs to have our personnel there. So I'd be happy to meet with Julio and discuss this, but there again, I'm not, I'm not sure. And, you know, I mean, they played, the Midget League played in there. They had the Midgets. I think they still have the Ponies and the Pee Wees. They played in the stadium. They're in the county league now. That was at the request of them. And it was welcome to have them there. So be happy to meet with Julio and then discuss this, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. I'd be happy to be a representative from the council as well, Mr. Mayor, so maybe we can try to set something off.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Anything else? You sure? Anyone else? Anyone else seeing none? I'll call the public comment closed. On to finance and bills. Resolutions?
Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-two, PL number forty-eight dash twenty-two, Alderman Gonzalez, seconded by Alderman Witt, to authorize the mayor to sign and submit an application to the Catteraugus County Department of Public Works for funding associated with the city of Olean ADA canoe and will kayak launch on six oh eight dash R South Union Street.
Okay, discuss this. Committee of the whole, any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-two, PL number forty-nine dash twenty-two by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Panis. That the common council as lead agency determines that the rehabilitate taxiway A and B project at the Catteraugus County Olean Airport is a type-two action, is not subject to review consistent with the secret regulations, and that no further review or action on behalf of the city, on behalf of the city of Olean is required.
Okay, this too is discussed. Any final comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number forty-nine dash twenty-two, PL number fifty dash twenty-two by Alderman, Alderwoman McCall, seconded by Alderman Witt. A bond resolution dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-two of the common council of the city of Olean, Catteraugus County, New York, known as the city, authorizing an airport capital improvements project generally consisting of improvements to the city's airport runway and taxiway at an estimated maximum cost of two million nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And authorizing the issuance of serial bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two million nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the city pursuant to the local finance law to finance such purpose, such amount to be offset by any federal, state, county, and/or local funds received, and delegating the power to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such bonds to the, to the city.
Okay. Again, we discussed this previously. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. And on resolution fifty dash twenty-two?
Yes.
Resolution fifty dash twenty-two, PL number fifty-one dash twenty-two by Alderman Crawford, and seconded by Alderman Panis. A bond resolution dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-two of the common council of the city of Olean, Catteraugus County, New York, known as the city, authorizing the Oak Hill Park capital improvements project at an estimated maximum cost of six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And authorizing the issuance of serial bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of the city pursuant to the local finance law to finance such purpose, such amount to be offset by any federal, state, county, and/or local funds received or appropriated, and delegating the power to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such bonds to the city auditor.
Okay. Discuss this a little bit in committee of the whole. Any final comments or questions? Alderwoman McCall?
In terms of my, my views, I, I believe that if we go for, if we don't go forward and we send this back out to bid, that any potential gain from removing the bathroom or something will be usurped by the increased costs that are out there now in terms of, you know, all of us have probably had work done on our houses and we, we know that things are way more than, than they were. And I believe that we would have a minimal savings if we were to go back out to bid.
Fair point as well. Anything else? Again, just as a reminder, this requires a super majority vote for pass. Okay. Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Witt?
No.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes type-two. Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-two, PL fifty-two dash twenty-two, need to sponsor.
Okay, so we have the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from sewer fund balance and various line items to capital fund two twenty-one Buffalo Street underpass. So this was the repairs to the Buffalo Street underpass that was, that was discussed in quite, quite in great length during the budget talks. Brad Camp gave us a rundown. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments on this?
No, I think we covered it very well.
So the decision was to just use, we have a, a very, what do I want to say? A very secure fund balance in the sewer fund. And so this is sewer-related, and so we are going to pay for it out of that. At least ninety thousand, I should say, out of sewer fund balance. Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll? I'll go ahead and sponsor. Could I get a second, please? Seconded by Alderman Witt? Will the clerk please call a roll?
I haven't read the resolution yet.
Oh, sorry. Please, please. Sorry.
Resolution fifty-one dash twenty-two, PL fifty-two dash twenty-two, Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Witt, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from sewer fund balance and various line items to capital fund number two-two-one Buffalo Street underpass.
Okay. Seeing no questions, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes second.
All right. At this time, I need to make a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters. Could I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Alderman McCall. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.